Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Township of Franklin's Planning Board in September of July 2024. Please stand for eligible agents.
Agents. And could.
Pleasure, agents to the flat. Please.
Thank you, God. And trick you above research status. For you, you should.
God. You let us what?
The purpose of test. Just all.
I would say. Name to the.
Notice that this meeting has been given as required by the UK Public Meetings Act and the annual notice of meetings. A copy was posted on the township website and notice that this meeting was sent to the Sentinel and a copy was posted at the Franklin Township Inaccessible Building. Roll call, please.
Mr. Malady.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Kahoo. Mr. Constantine.
Turn.
Mr. Doyle. Mr. Ranson. Mr. Swade.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mayor Bruno.
Yes.
And Mr. Traballium.
Here.
But Chairman Pesh is not at tonight's meeting. He's recovering from major surgery and he hosts the move back next month. With that being said, I'd like to see alternate Mr. Clark for Mr. Pesh. First on the agenda this evening is the memorialization of resolutions for PB 2307 Dorn. Is there a motion to approve resolution?
Yes. No, it can go. It's second.
Seconded by Jim Kelly, meaning by John the P. Thank you. This an all in favor or?
Roll call.
I can do a roll call.
Okay.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
And Mr. Traballium.
Yes.
Motion, resolution carries.
Would mean to him. Yeah.
You guys were here for their presentation. I mean, I would be.
The original three.
Where? Should we the last one where that's going?
Where the extension.
For the extension.
Okay, but not last. We're the original.
Well, the original, well, the two are major. I'm sorry. But for the extension, you have to, I don't know, some you don't get. Call upon them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Excellent. All right. Next on the agenda.
Hence, glaringness.
PB 23-17 Newfield Dollar General LLC.
Good evening.
My name is Sarah Werner of the firm of Prime, Tuvella, and Misselli.
We represent the applicant, Newfield Harding Highway DG LLC. The application before the board this evening relates to property located at the intersection of Harding Highway and Main Street, also known as Block 7202, Lot 10 on your Township tax map. The property consists of 13.1 acres of currently vacant undeveloped land. The applicant is before the board this evening seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, minor subdivision approval, and ancillary bulk variance and design waiver release. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into a total of two parcels. The first, which will be the remainder lot, will equal about 10 acre, 10.725 acres, and the newly formed lot upon which a Dollar General retail store is proposed will measure approximately 1.944 acres. The Dollar General retail store that is proposed on that smaller newly created lot is approximately 10,640 square feet. Can you hear me? Okay. And as I already stated, no development whatsoever is proposed on the remainder lot. So the vast majority of this property will remain undeveloped. I have with me tonight three witnesses that you will be hearing from. The first is Olivia Kononiyuk of Stonefield Engineering and Design. She is applicant's civil site engineer. The second person you'll be hearing from is Paul Much, also of Stonefield Engineering and Design. He is applicant's traffic engineer. And third, you'll be hearing from Elizabeth McManus of Kyle McManus Associates, who is applicant's professional planner. Ms. McManus should be here shortly. Unfortunately, she got caught in traffic, but luckily I intend to call her last so we can proceed in her absence. Before I turn it over to the witnesses, there are just a couple items that I would first like to go through, starting with what type of store Dollar General is. Dollar General is a small box retailer, which according to its own mission statement makes shopping for everyday needs simpler and hassle-free by offering a carefully edited assortment of the most popular brands at low everyday prices in small convenient locations. As I'm sure this board is already aware, Dollar General is not your typical dollar or 99 cent store. Rather, it's a neighborhood retail store that carries top quality brands made by America's most trusted manufacturers like Procter &amp; Gamble, Nabisco, Kill Ogs, and the like. The second thing I'd like to discuss is that we have received review letters from your board professionals, both Mr. Di Armiento and Mr. Docney. To date, we have received three joint review letters. After the second review letter was issued, and that letter was dated April 1st, 2024, our office, along with a representative of applicant and applicant's professional team, participated in a virtual meeting with the board's professional staff in order to go through all aspects of the site plan application that had been submitted. We found that meeting to be extremely helpful in getting us to where we are today, and what that is, is a revised site plan. So in direct response to that April 1st review letter and the comments received at that meeting, the applicant went back, revised his site plan, and submitted that plan, which is the plan that is going to be presented to you this evening. As a result of the revisions that were made to the site plan, as compared to the applicant's initial submission, applicant this evening is seeking a total of two bulk variances and three design waivers. At the time of the initial submission, we had been seeking a total of four bulk variances and four design waivers, so we were able to eliminate two of the bulk variances and one of the design waivers. The board's engineer and planner then went on to issue a third and final joint review letter dated July 10th, 2024, so just last week. That updated review letter takes into account the plans as revised. There are still a few comments that remain outstanding, and applicant is willing to comply with each and every one. Those comments can be broken down into two categories. The first is minor revisions to the plans, which we are happy to make as a condition of any approval this board might grant. And the second is items that will be addressed tonight through the testimony of our professionals. So without further ado, if I could please introduce our first witness, Olivia Kononiyuk of Stonefield Engineering and Design.
Sweetie. Miss.
If I could have her sworn in at this time.
Thank you, Miss Ali. Kononiyuk, yes. No use. Could you please bring your. Please swear in solid truth, the law, truth, and mercy. As if you had any. Exactly. Do you? And I don't know if they want to go through.
Yeah, I was gonna qualify.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Olivia. Could you please start by providing the board with a brief overview of your educational and professional background, including any licenses you currently hold?
Yes, well, my name is Olivia Kononiyuk, both K-O-N-O-N-I-U-K. I'm a project engineer at Stonefield Engineering located at 15 Spring Street in Princeton, New Jersey. I graduated from Rowan University with my bachelor's in civil engineering, and I'm a professionally licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, and my license is in good standing. I've been practicing in the land development industry for five years, and I have experienced more than 50 land development projects of similar scope to the 1 USC this evening. I have extensive experience with Dollar General, having been involved in the design for over 10 locations now built and open in New Jersey. I'm intimately familiar with the application before you this evening, as I have personally prepared the plans and reports to you.
Thank you very much. We would ask that Ms. Kononiyuk be accepted as an expert in the field of civil engineering.
I.
We accept.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kononiyuk, you just stated this in your credentials, but you are familiar with the application and plans that were submitted?
Yes.
Thank you. Could you please walk us through the plan that is being presented to the board for approval this evening?
Yes, absolutely, and I'd like.
Do we want to put the board up?
Yeah. Well, I'd like to begin by stating we worked extensively with the board professionals to submit a fully compliant site plan with no bulk relief requested. The majority of the board professionals' comments have been addressed for the latest review letter, and as stated, we will comply with all remaining comments. But that being said, yeah, I would like to introduce my first exhibit.
Okay. If we can mark this A1, and if you could begin by telling us the date and title of that exhibit.
Date is July 6th, secured by side office, and then read. It's an area listed as one of one. What do you say? Not enough to yet. What if A1?
You can. You can.
Thank you.
Okay.
It.
So the north arrows to the top of the page, the site is located in the center outlined in yellow. This is a mostly triangular vacant undeveloped 13.1 acre lot located in the highway commercial zone where retail stores are permitted use. It is on the northwest corner of Harding Highway and Main Road. Surrounding the site to the west, there is a vacant lot. Across Route 40, there is a bus garage. On the southeast corner of the intersection, there is a small convenience store, and across Main Street, there is a residence, and further up is the Main Road Elementary School. It's said mostly triangular as there is a carved out corner lot nearest the intersection owned by the NJ DOT. There are a few utility poles along the frontage, but being the site is primarily used for farming, there's not much else on it. 1.9 acres are being subdivided, as shown, towards the intersection where project site is labeled for the proposed Dollar General development into a unique but compliant lot shape to minimize the county frontage.
Let me start.
Then. What will be your next exhibit?
It's on the. Yep.
And so we'll mark this as exhibit A2.
This is the site rendering exhibit.
And this is prepared on July 12, 2024.
Thank you.
Olivia, this is, just to correct me if I'm wrong, this is simply a colorized version of the site plan that was in the Ministry of Assembly submission guide?
That is correct.
Done.
The application proposes, as you heard, a 10,640 square foot Dollar General retail store with 35 physical parking spaces and one EV make-ready space located at the northernmost space of the leftmost row of parking. Access to the site is provided via full movement driveway along Harding Highway, which is a, which is Route 40, a DOT road with whom we have an active major access application pending. We are showing curb and sidewalk, which intends to extend and connect into the future DOT, or rather currently being constructed DOT curb and sidewalk, as well as a pedestrian access to the store from the proposed public sidewalk. Thank you. The site has a 60/40 split of landscaped area and impervious coverage respectively, of which the impervious is well under the township requirement. A six-foot-high monument sign is proposed near the driveway, and a wall sign of the Dollar General lettering is proposed on the front entrance of the store. Along Main Road, per requirement of the county, we are proposing curb and approximately eight feet of roadway winding along the Dollar General portion. Typical hours of the store are 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. This is Dollar General's prototypical building and layout, so deliveries will run smoothly. Deliveries to the site are daily with a small box truck and one to two times weekly with a WB67 tractor trailer. The truck will enter the site and pull forward into the front drive aisle, then reverse into the loading area, and then pull straight out of the driveway. The truck is on-site for approximately 45 minutes, and deliveries come in rotainers. Employees sort through the products and shelve the products. They break down the shipping cardboard back into the rotainers, which are switched out with the next delivery's rotainer. The trash enclosure is oversized to allow for storage rotainers if necessary, as shown in the enclosure. Trash and recycling is picked up one to two times a week, and there are two to three employees on shift at all times, four employees max, and the Dollar General will employ about 10 people total. This application is classified as a major development per local and NJDEP regulations. The soils on-site allow for infiltration, and groundwater is very low, resulting in optimal soil conditions. There are two basins proposed, one in the west of the site and one in the north. The western basin collects the parking area, which is pretreated by forbays before it discharges into the basin, and the north basin collects the roof runoff and runoff generated by the county widening, which is also pretreated via forbay before discharging into the basin. Both basins comply with local and NJDEP regulations for water quality treatment, quantity reductions, and groundwater recharge. There's a five-foot-wide curb cut for maintenance, for maintenance access south of the trash enclosure and just north of the proposed EV make-ready space. Overall, the landscaping was designed to implement a mix of trees and flowering shrubs throughout the site. Shrubs are proposed at the building and the parking lot perimeter to bring all season interest. Headlight screening to the right of way is provided by evergreen shrubs along the parking lot perimeter, and street trees are proposed along both frontages to increase curb appeal. Screening is provided around the trash enclosure to further conceal it, and plenty of shrubs are proposed around the perimeter of both visible sides of each basin. The design largely consists of native species, which were selected because they're easy to maintain. So from any angle of these, of the site roadway, you will see some sort of planting. There are three area lights on-site. They will be backshielded. There are several lights on the building, providing appropriate levels throughout the parking lot and the site. The proposed light fixtures are 41,000 Kelvin, which is a Dollar General standard used on most other Dollar General locations, including the Porchtown Road application. Signs on-site are internally illuminated, and all lights will shut off one hour after closing. In general, the lighting design and operations are typical of a commercial application. Utilities on-site are serviced via private well for water, private septic system designed by Hauser Engineering, which fits perfectly to the right of the building. Gas is proposed to connect into Route 40, and the electric connection will connect into the closest utility pole along Main Road. Hi. No.
Bye. Real quick, before we get looking and bring the architecturals up.
Correct.
Just to confirm something you said, but in different terms. So we need all bulk standards with regard to lot area, lot width, lot depth. Anything of that nature, correct?
Correct.
We are requesting, and our planner will get into this in more depth, but we are requesting two variances, correct?
Yes.
Could you identify those variances?
Yes, we are requesting a parking variance where 43 spaces are required. We are proposing 36, 35 physical, and one EV. And we are also requesting a variance for the placement of the proposed loading area being that's in the drive aisle.
Okay. And our traffic engineer will speak to those both in more depth. So if you would like to bring up the architectural, that is time.
Can we actually go back real quick? Can we just go back through the number of employees, the hours of trash pickup? I know you went through that.
Yes.
Go photograph real quick.
So the hours of the store are 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. There's two to three employees typically, four employees for a max shift, and the Dollar General employee total, about 10 total employees.
Okay, and what about the loading and offloading times and trash pickup?
Olivia, is it correct that the loading and unloading for purposes of the WB60 deliveries, which, as you testified, occur approximately one to two times a week? Those will occur during off-peak but open store hours, correct?
That is correct.
And as you stated, those take only about 45 minutes?
Yes.
As for trash and recycling, those occur approximately one to two times a week as well, correct?
Yes.
And those will also, we will try to schedule it to occur during off-peak hours?
Yes.
Now, the smaller box trucks delivering products such as bread, milk, soda, those occur daily, correct?
That is correct.
But those vehicles are equipped to fit within the normal parking spaces on the property?
Yes.
So it won't interfere with operations if they're there during any open hour?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to put up the architectural drawing. This was previously submitted. We are going to be looking at.
You bring it out again.
Page A6.
It's Perkins. Here.
And we will mark this exhibit A story. Those submitted will still mark that.
It will still be marked A3.
Okay.
Third, 12.
This is the architectural drawing prepared by Chad and Associates dated June 21st, 2024. The Dollar General is proposing a fully upgraded architectural design, taking into account every side of the building, and every side is visible from the roadway. Front windows are shown on all building sides, and the facade is split between a stone neal wall and a hardy plank siding. Similar to the Porchtown site, however, I think it's a little visually, a little more visually appealing with the inclusion of the awnings above the front windows.
Right. And just to clarify, I know you just said this, but the treatment that we're seeing on this side here is going to carry around to the other two sides that we can't see on the school.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
So to be clear, all four sides contain the same treatment?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Now, Olivia, we're also requesting three design waivers. I believe two of them relate to the architectural. Could you run through those real briefly?
Yes, the waivers we are requesting is a waiver for the minimum of 10% of the internal area of the parking lot to be landscaped. Another waiver is that all site developments shall have sidewalks where none is proposed on the Main Road frontage. The architectural waiver we are requesting is for the building facade incorporating projections and recessions, or recesses along 20% of the facade length if it's greater than 100 linear feet, which we have 140.
Okay. And again, Ms. McManus, our planner will speak to this more, but it is the opinion of our design team that we meet the intent of the last waiver you just referenced with regard to the recesses in the facade?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Now, you stated this in your opening, but you did have a chance to review the board engineer board professionals' July 10th, 2024 review letter, correct?
Yes.
And you see no issue complying with the remaining comments contained therein?
No issue. We will comply with all comments.
You should like. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions from Ms. Kononiyuk. If the board has questions for her at this time, or if you prefer to hold all questions until all witnesses have spoke.
I had questions. Wait.
All right. With that, our next witness is Paul Much, applicant's traffic engineer.
Questions? Question.
Good evening, Mr. Much.
Good evening.
Would you have you sworn in?
To bring you right in. Be sure to bring us all the truth, the law, truth, and mercy.
I do.
All right. Mr. Much, could you please provide the board with a brief overview of your education and professional backgrounds, including any licenses you currently hold?
Yes, again, Paul Much, M is in Mary, U-T-C-H from Stonefield Engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I also graduated from Rowan University. I've appeared before more than 100 land use boards in the state of New Jersey in both a civil and traffic perspective, and I've been accepted by, by those boards on applications similar to one this evening.
Okay. And your license is current and in good standing?
That is correct, yes.
We would ask that the board accept Mr. Much as an expert in the field of traffic engineering?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Much, you're familiar with the traffic impact study that was submitted in connection with this application, correct?
Yes, I am.
Could you please run us through what that study undertook and what the findings were?
Yes, and I'll try to keep this as simple as possible because the traffic for a Dollar General is a relatively simple piece of the application because it is a low traffic generator in general. But we took the liberty of preparing a traffic impact study to not only assess the impacts of the Dollar General, but to take a look at the roadway network itself as well, to find out if we have any existing traffic conditions that would be outside the norm for an application such as this. We utilized physical traffic counts. We sat and counted the intersection in June of 2023, and we also used the standard, the industry standard methods of the trip generation manual, the parking generation manual, and synchro to, to model the site in a existing no build and build condition, which I'll go through. Just to describe the roadway network, I'm sure everybody's familiar generally, but a little bit to describe that roadway network. Harding Highway is also known as Route 40, which is our main frontage and located along the south of the plan that is that NJ DOT frontage. That's an urban principal arterial providing east-west access mainly to 55 and Route 47 in the area. That's where we expect the bulk of our traffic, and that's why our driveway has been located on that roadway. Main Roads, County Road 555 is a rural collector. We look to leave it that way, keep the commercial traffic off, keep our driveway on the DOT so it can be controlled by the existing DOT intersection, as well as the, the project that they have in progress right now to install a couple, an extra turn lane in there. So that, that intersection will only get better in the proposed condition. It's currently under construction. The Harding Highway frontage is a 50 mile an hour road, and the Main Road frontage is a 35 mile an hour road, just more evidence of why we should keep our main commercial driveway on that DOT frontage. There's a two-phase signal at the intersection, which is currently being upgraded by the DOT, and again, that driveway location is just focused on the main road for this application. To perform our analysis for this application, we took those counts that we performed in, in June of last year, confirmed the peak hours that are associated with this roadway network, which are in the weekday morning, 7:00 to 8:00 a.m., in the weekday evening, 4:45 to 5:45 p.m., and the Saturday midday is 12:15 to 1:15, all the hours you'd expect for this roadway network and, and for this type of use. We do a level of service comparison for the existing and the no build conditions, the existing condition. We plug in that physical counted data, and then we grow it by 1% to 2025. It's an NJ DOT standard. See how the existing road is operating today and how that roadway network without the Dollar General will be operating in 2025, which is also a reasonable estimate of when the Dollar General would open. What we found in both of those cases is that the roadway network is operating very efficiently at levels of service A and B with an aggregate of level of service B. We moved beyond that. That's a good data point to have, and we move into the build condition where we add in the trip generation from the trip generation manual for the Dollar General itself. Again, this is a low traffic generator with 48 trips in the weekday morning, 79 trips in the weekday evening, and 79 trips in the Saturday midday, all falling below that 100-trip threshold that we usually, usually look at as anything that would add any sort of significant traffic. So we have that data point as well. We use Variety Store in the code, which is Land Use Code 814, and then we plug that back into our model, and we see what were the changes in the level of service now that we're adding the traffic of the Dollar General to that intersection, and how does our driveway operate? What we found is very minute changes to the level of service. We're talking about fractions of a section, of a second at the intersection, and our driveway operates at level of service A, B, or C, which is acceptable, and roughly the same as what the intersection would, would operate as as well. So basically, the conclusion there is that we do not feel that the Dollar General is going to degrade the existing positive traffic pattern we have. That in conjunction with the DOT project that's going on, the traffic will, will stay efficient, and the level of service will remain good. I also looked at the parking. I just wanted to comment on that for the Dollar General and that parking variance that we are requesting. We have 35 physical spaces proposed, where 43 are required. We look at three data points whenever we look at this. First and foremost, Dollar General and their operations. For stores of this size throughout New Jersey, throughout the country, their prototype is 35 parking spaces. So we look to them to, to kind of report back on how much parking do you need before we start adding unneeded pavement to a project. The second is the parking generation manual associated with this land use, and that comes to 1.79 spaces per 1,000, which is roughly 36 spaces. So we know we're in the ballpark with those two data points, and then we do physical counts on the existing Dollar Generals. We counted more than nine Dollar Generals in the area, Egg Harbor. We counted the Harding Highway store and many others of similar size and scope, and we found that the maximum party parking utilization at any one time was 25 spaces, and that was kind of the outlier. Most of the time, it hovers between 10 and 15 spaces, and that report's included as part of our traffic impact study. So all three data points point to 35 spaces being more or at or more than what we need for this, for this Dollar General. And it's also important to note that we do have the impervious coverage on-site, that we have additional green space we could put parking. We just don't want to install parking where it's not needed based on those, those traffic assessments that we do. So with that, that's the, that's the summary of my testimony. If there are any questions or anything else you'd like me to cover.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Much at this time, if the board has any.
Any questions from anyone?
I think we're reserved somewhere. Is that what?
Well, I'd have questions as related to the presentation, but they probably have one for the car team. So we say for a sort of project of this size, we have, we're saying you need 43 signs, So we say for a sort of project of this size, we say you need 43 spaces.
Correct.
So this is always seven less. Have you made, are you satisfied, were pissed with the explanation, what kind of justification for only 35?
Yeah, I mean, the information that they provided, even the one town maximum that's observed was 16 active spots being utilized. And then I think all of their, I have to report right here. So we're looking at the maximum demand, the busiest one was in Pensacola with 24, sorry, misspoke, Millville with 25, and their average demand overall with the ones that provided is eight and a half spaces, and the maximum, that was totally wide. So based off of the historic data they're gathering from their similar store sizes, I don't have objections.
How much additional space was need to be covered to include 16?
Let's see, so we're, let's see, what is it, nine by 18?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just roughly deal with 200 square feet per spot on their building.
Yeah.
So it's 1,400 square feet, that's all.
Plus driving aisle spaces.
Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, in reality, I think on this site, you probably have to shift back your subdivision line a little bit, because I'll probably have to seek a waiver to the property line where the DOT owns. So I don't know if you have anything to add, Chris.
Oh, I have another question I'll get to in a second, but one thing that was not mentioned that I think might aid in the discussion of the parking in terms of utilization numbers. I know to some degree when Dollar Generals are opening additional stores in a community, which this would be, I believe, least but third in Franklin. Some of the traffic they're getting is cannibalization from other stores that are already existing. So there's a
Balancing act.
Balancing of that, as well as the possibility of, for some reason, this lot is full of this Dollar General, they can drive a few miles away and go to one of the other stores you've already got in town. Hasn't tied that, not like they'll have to then go park at the elementary school and run across the street or something.
Yeah, and in our experience, and we have extensive experience with Dollar General, we have not found it to be an issue where you have people parking offsite, which is obviously the concern. You don't want people parking on the roadway or in adjacent lots, and we have not seen that, and that's why we did those parking studies, to kind of just give us a little bit of real-world data rather than just using the, you know, the books.
And Mr. Much, just one question, just to clarify for the board's sake. In those numbers, when you're calculating, you're including the parking spaces being utilized by employees on this site, correct?
Yes, all of that is inclusive employees, the counts that we performed, as well as the calculations that I referenced.
The one question I did have was, I believe the other engineer said, should defer to you on this, in terms of the loading space blocking, parking spaces during the active loading?
Yes, this is similar, it's a little bit more unique in this situation because we have moved more of the parking to the side just because of, to avoid the variance for the parking in the frontage. But that tractor trailer's onsite for 45 minutes, it's what we'll call blocking the least utilized spaces onsite, and typically, that's where we would instruct the employees to park, and we have striped those as employee parking spaces in the past. But again, at the operations of all the Dollar Generals we've worked on in New Jersey, we have not seen the interaction of that 45-minute truck coming onsite and getting offsite as being an issue with existing customers. Again, you hear that number, 10, 15 spaces, there's more than that provided in front and outside of that loading area where that truck would be. And again, off-peak hours as well.
Paul, just to confirm, there's 10 spaces in the very front of the building, front of the entrance, so what, correct?
Yes, and that's where you'd expect most of your traffic.
Just to piggyback off of Chris's question, how many spaces were blocked for that 45-minute window?
It's like a total of seven, maybe if you round it up, it's a total of nine of the spaces are blocked for that 45-minute period. So you're talking about, you know, you're going to have 20-plus parking spaces available at all times, even in that 45-minute delivery period.
So what you're stating is when a tractor trailer's making its delivery for 45 minutes, approximately seven of your spaces will be blocked?
Yes, yes. And typically, that truck would park to the side, and there would be enough room to maneuver, but again, we just don't see the traffic in the parking and in the images that we submit as part of our report, you just don't see people parking that far from the entrance, especially in the off-peak hours when the truck is delivering.
And Mr. Much, to go back to Ms. Cononey Oak's testimony, it's correct that the loading also occurs during off-peak hours, when the number of parking spaces utilized would be even lower than that max of what we're seeing.
Yes, that's correct, and this is a condition that exists on the vast majority of Dollar Generals. Porchtown Road is actually an outlier just because of the uniqueness of that lot, but any other Dollar General that you see that is a prototype, which is what you see here, those spaces are blocked for those 45 minutes, and we just have not had any reports or incidents where it becomes an issue.
Paul, why do you refer to Porchtown Road as a "how" moment?
Well, that lot was a little bit different. We had kind of a slender rectangle with two access points. The truck pulls through rather than doing that backing motion, so there was just a different parking layout. It's not their prototypical store, but it was designed to operate efficiently. This one is designed per their standards.
In this application, the truck's going to pull in toward 40, and Sarah can run her finger and show us the route of the truck.
So if you can see, the truck will, whichever way it's coming from on Route 40, it'll pull into the site headfirst into this dead-end space here, and reverse into the loading space. Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but the turning template for that movement was included in our submission, and it is having both of us virtually on multiple of these applications is prototypical, correct?
Yes, it's a prototypical operation for all Dollar General stores. It's also under the review, obviously, of the NJ DOT for those turning movements. It's been designed efficiently per their standards as well.
And we have adequate driveway width, drive aisle width to accommodate this maneuver?
Yeah, we do. It's very common, and I mean, we've probably worked on 20 of these Dollar General applications.
Right, that's the same way those who charge. So suppose I was a customer, and I didn't want to park in front of the store, and I wanted to park on the western side.
You still have, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong?
I now have seven to 10 slots.
Sure, yes, you still have all.
But that's not my question.
I want to hear it.
You know it's common.
Yeah.
I'm a customer, I feel like walking, I park on the west, I come out of the store, and your trailers got me blocked in. How often does that happen?
I have not heard of it reported because, again, this is a 45-minute blip, once, maybe twice a week, so it's very rare, and what I would say is, there's a couple of things. We have employees in the store that can help. Even if that truck is parked in that driveway, the likelihood of those parking spaces around you also being utilized, it'll likely afford you the room to get out of there, and if not, then we'll instruct the truck driver to let you out. You know, in that very rare case, I think there's plenty of kind of fail safes that would allow that customer to leave the store.
So Paul, to piggyback off your question, and looking at the turning, circulation plan, so I know that we have a comment in our letter about the tire clipping the one curb or going over top of one curb, which I said you're going to address. It also looks like there's a slight overhang into your first handicap stall, and even the ones from the, basically, the crosswalks to the right. Is that something you guys can evaluate?
Yeah.
If you do have turning movements, that somebody who has a truck that's parking in the front of the store doesn't get clipped?
Yeah, yeah, we will, and that's an important piece, especially as we move this forward with Dollar General, is that they don't utilize the parking spaces because it is done during store hours and off-peak. So it's a requirement, even when we submit this to Dollar General, that turning template cannot utilize any parking spaces, no trucks getting clipped, which is also why we have the deeper spots along the frontage.
Just to simplify it, on that side of the building, 153-foot drive ends up here, which is wide, 8 foot 6, how wide's that parking lot? See, 20 just for parking space, how wide's that middle lane?
Yeah, that is. This on this. I believe they typically use 30 feet.
Yeah, it's 30 feet at that main, right, at like that southwest corner of the building, and it necks down to 26 feet as you get beyond the parking spaces, and tip 30 is your typical. We just run the template and try to save on pavement where we can.
Why turn it?
Mr. Much, just to piggyback off of something that I think already has been implied, and Ms. Cononey testified to this, but have you had a chance to review the latest review letter of the Board Engineer and Board Planner?
I have, yes.
And do you see any concerns or issues complying with all the comments contained therein?
No, no, we plan to comply with all comments.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions for Mr. Much, I can bring up my last witness.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Much. My third and final witness is Elizabeth McManus of Kyle McManus Associates, applicant's professional planner.
Good evening, Ms. McManus. Hi there, this is the speaker.
Hi, Ms. McManus, would you please raise your mic, do you swear a permit on truth? I think you're not paying much to it.
I do.
Yeah, the head.
Ms. McManus, could you please begin by providing the board with a brief overview of your educational professional background, including any licenses you currently hold and their standing?
Sure. So first and foremost, I'm a licensed planner here in New Jersey. I hold my NJ PP. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, essentially the National Planning License or Certification Program. I have an undergraduate degree from Rutgers University in Environmental Policy, graduate degree also from Rutgers in City and Regional Planning. I've been working in New Jersey throughout my entire career, so working in New Jersey land use for more than 20 years, and I do a lot of municipal representation, but I also do quite a bit of private testimony like we have this evening. I've not had the pleasure of being down in this municipality, but I've worked in many other places, including but not limited to, I will say it's more than two dozen places, but places like Stafford, Princeton, Long Hill Township, Barrington Township, Piscataway, Trenton, and many other communities.
Thank you. I'd ask that Ms. McManus be accepted as an expert in field professional planning?
Oh, certainly, yes.
Thank you very much. Ms. McManus, you've had a chance to review the application that was submitted to the board, correct?
Yes.
And you've reviewed the Township's master plan and land use ordinance?
Yes.
You're familiar with the two bulk variances and three design waivers being sought to see you in?
Yes.
In your professional opinion, could you please go through the justifications for this relief under the municipal land use law and provide your professional opinion whether they can in fact be justified?
I'd be happy to.
If you would like any exhibits, we have an aerial on the site.
Yeah, thank you very much. So the first variance I'd like to address is the number of parking spaces, and I will say for both of our variances, I'm pleased to say they're C variances only, certainly not D variances. So for our parking variance, I think, as I'm sure the board knows, we're required to provide 43 parking spaces, however, we have 36 proposed, 35 plus one a credit for the EV. And I think that this variance can be justified as a C2 variance, the flexible C, if you will, and I say that because I see three purposes of the municipal land use law that are supported by the relief. The first is Purpose A, which is the promotion of general welfare. The second is Purpose J, which is conservation of the environment, and last, Purpose M, the efficiency of land use, more efficient use of land. And I cited these three purposes for a couple of reasons, and so first, as I'm sure you just heard from our traffic testimony, I just want to highlight the fact that while we are proposing less parking than what the township requires, I think that we are actually proposing more than adequate parking for the use that we are proposing. So we have a traffic study for New Jersey demonstrating the need for just 19 parking spaces, and from other sites of about 25 parking spaces. And so that means that even with our parking relief, we have a pretty substantial cushion. And even with that cushion, I'm pleased to say that the result is, not only are we, first and foremost, providing adequate parking, but we're able to do so by providing less impervious cover on the property. And so also, the flip side of that is, of course, more green space, more opportunity for landscaping. And so it's that additional green space, or the lack of pervious, or excuse me, impervious cover, that I think is relevant to conservation and to improving the environment, specifically Purpose J that I cited. In terms of the more efficient use of land, that Purpose M that I cited, I think that is relevant because, quite honestly, as demonstrated through testimony and through our traffic study, it's very clear, it's clear to me, it's clear to our team, that that parking is just simply not necessary, and it's more efficient for that portion of the property to be devoted to something that better serves the public good, better serves the township, and that, quite honestly, is pervious cover, green space, and landscaping, as opposed to parking spaces that will go unused. And so I think those are the three purposes of the MLUL that the board can grant, can rely upon to grant that variance. But in addition, we of course have negative criteria, and I think that this variance can certainly be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, frankly, any detriment to the public good because the parking is simply unnecessary. The benefit is through not providing the parking. But in terms of consistency with the master plan or substantial detriment to the master plan, I don't, in my review of the master plan, the zoning ordinance, I don't see substantial detriment. Now, I will say that there's no specific master plan language that I could find that would address the lack of parking on this particular property. And so instead, what I look to is the intent of the parking standard, and that is, quite honestly, to ensure that the site functions properly and to ensure that potential customers or perhaps employees are not forced to try to find offsite parking here. But again, I go back to the information that we have specific for this use that clearly demonstrates that the parking is just excess and is going to lead to excess impervious cover. And so because of that, I think that the board can find that the benefit of having less parking on the property is far outweighing the detriment of having parking relief or parking variance associated with the site. Our next and last variance is the loading relief, and for that, I'm going to cite the same three purposes of the MLUL, because I think this is also a C2, that flexible C variance. So again, for the record, it's Purpose A, promotion of the general welfare, Purpose J, conservation of the environment, and Purpose M, the more efficient use of land. And so for this variance, I think somewhat similar to the parking variance, there's, I think there's public good, there's certainly no use to having excess impervious cover on the property. And so being able to co-locate the drive, excuse me, the loading area within, partially with one of the drive aisles, I think works well. It's certainly a more efficient use of that paved parking area, and as we just heard moments ago, in terms of detriment to potential customers, very little, given how, what a short span our loading is, with just one to two times a week for up to 45 minutes. And so again, for this loading, I see promotion of the general welfare, conservation of the environment, and more efficient use of land, just by simply not having excess impervious cover, and instead being able to devote more of this site to landscaping and green space and aspects of development that are much more pleasing to the eye than a parking lot, loading area. In terms of the negative criteria for this particular variance, I don't think there's any substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan. Here, the impact of relief is primarily internal, it's a site operation issue, and I know, based on what we've heard this evening and the way that these stores function, this is, to the extent that it's an issue, it's something that's manageable through communication with the driver, potentially communication with customers if that's not, if that is necessary. And so simply, this creates an opportunity, I would say, for the municipality to have a better-looking site, more green space on a property. And in terms of your master plan, I don't see language specifically in there about loading spaces and the need for them, but the intent of the regulation more generally is to ensure that you're able to eliminate potential conflicts between loading areas, parking areas, and drive aisles. And here, we have such a, we have such a limited delivery window per week, you know, one to two times a week for less than an hour, that I think that the conflicts have been, the conflicts are quite minimized, and so we're still able to meet the intent of this type of regulation in the township code. And so again, for all, for the lack of impervious cover, the lack of impact, particularly offsite impacts for this particular variance, I think that the benefits of the co-located loading and drive aisles are certainly to the benefit of the township and outweigh any detriments that could be created. So those are two variances. We also have three waivers that I want to address. Of course, waivers have a different standard or a different criteria that must be met, and so instead of positive and negative criteria, it's just simply, is the standard impractical on this property, or perhaps wouldn't undue hardship ensue from its enforcement? I will say, I'm going to talk to you not so much about a hardship, but really what's practical, and I think what makes sense for the community and what makes sense for this site. So the first variance is the sidewalk waiver, and what we don't have are sidewalks on Main Road today. Normally, when sidewalks are required, the thinking is often about trying to connect them to an existing network, and along Main Road, that's not something that we're able to connect to. But we do have NJ DOT proposing improvements at the intersection that we're located proximate to. And so here, what we are proposing is a sidewalk along Harding Highway that will connect to these improvements. And so we're able to, thank you, to provide pedestrian connections and provide improved walkability on this property, but we're going to encourage folks to use Harding Highway instead of Main. And I think that's, honestly, I think that's a good idea because it's helpful for promoting safety. We don't necessarily want people to be inclined to cross Main Road to get to a sidewalk. Instead, I would much rather see them go to Harding Highway and utilize what will be the existing sidewalks in that area. The next waiver that I'd like to address is the landscape waiver. Here, instead of having the landscaping throughout the parking lot, what we've really done is to put additional plantings along the perimeter of the parking lot, and you can start to get a sense from our colored rendering in probably A1, if I had to guess, A1. And so you can see the plantings located around the parking lot and around the site, and so this is not simply a net loss of landscaping that the township is going to experience as a result, it's really about relocating those plantings. And I think that's appropriate here, not only because we are providing substantial plantings on the property, but also because we don't have a particularly large parking lot. You know, again, we're looking at You know, again, we're looking at about 35 parking spaces, this is not a lot of 100 parking spaces or perhaps more, nor is it very long expanses or rows of parking. We really have pretty limited rows of parking on this site, and so we have less of a need to have to break up this, what could be on other properties, a large mass of parking area or impervious cover. And so I really think that the the board can grant the landscaping waiver, knowing that, notwithstanding the fact that we are seeking relief for this item, the site is going to be really well planted and landscaped and truly will be a pleasing property and I think an asset to this area. And then our our last waiver is in regard to the building architecture. And so for this last, this last item, we have a relief that requires building facades greater than 100 linear feet, not having, for a facade not, greater than 100 linear feet, not having projections or recesses along at least 20% of the facade length. And at the end of the day, I think what's intended by that regulation is, quite honestly, to have a nice looking building, to have a building that is not, that does not have blank walls, that is not excessively plain, but instead one that is inviting and visually pleasing. And as we see on
A3.
A3, thank you. I think that's exactly what we've done. And so what we have are a variety of building materials and a variety of building colors that really break up the facade of the building. Most specifically, I just wanted to highlight the water table. That's the brick down at the bottom of the building. And not only does that provide some some architectural detail on the building, it creates a more interesting facade, what it also does is the the water table, that brick is going to extend beyond the hardy plank, and that's going to create some relief, a little bit of movement in the building. And the distinction I'm trying to draw is just simply between that, where you have the the water table extending beyond the facade, and comparing that to a building that just simply has a flat facade with no relief, no movement, if you will, across the front of the or sides of the building. In addition to that, that horizontal detail that we've added to the building, we also have the vertical details, where we've essentially broken the building up into bays that will help to visually break up the appearance of the building. And then lastly, I think, as is obvious from A3, our building is only a single story. And so in terms of the potential for a blank wall or something that's overly plain, it is somewhat limited. But notwithstanding, we've, we've added that vertical detail as well as the horizontal detail. And of course, we also have the awnings along the building and the additional building colors that is the the hardy plank for the facade. And so given the the various details that we are proposing on the building, I do think that we're meeting the intent of this architectural requirement by providing a, frankly, a nice looking building that will be not out of character with the area and I think will be a nice addition to the site. And so with that, those are our two variances and our three waivers that I've gone through, the sidewalk, the landscape, the building design waiver, and then, of course, the parking and the loading. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have no further questions. Thank you very much, Ms. McManus. If the board has any questions for Ms. McManus or either of our other WU's at this time, we'd be happy to answer those, but if not, our presentation is concluded.
I have some questions.
Sure.
So a lot of talk was mentioned about landscaping and one of the justifications for one of the variances or waivers, because now the, no plantings in the arc lot, therefore there could be more plantings along the sub. But that said, a couple of questions. One, you're talking about native trees. What what sort of trees are considered?
The specific type of tree? Everything is shown on the landscaping schedule. And then give us a moment to see.
What you want, tace of trees? Well, they got a October glory red maple, Armstrong Freeman maple, shade master honey locusts, sour guns, blah blah blah. For the evergreens, the jitter.
Thanks.
For what it's worth, we are willing to work with the board's professionals if you
prefer to see different native species. We're happy to do that.
We just talked on some way that all this, that we use here offering. I just wanted to make sure we're in a couple of things that weren't on this list.
Sure. Understood.
Then with, then along the main road going towards the north, is there any way to, right now, you're showing five trees, right? So is there any way to get another one up at the top of the arc? And then a couple more down where where the top line comes down from
Here?
From there to there, yeah.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
And then also along the cup in northern.
Are you able to put them here? Is there any requirement with it being close to the school? Are we good? We're good. We can, I'm getting the nod, that'd be okay. So that's
Okay, so then can we say that, all right, so you're showing five, six, seven, eight, eight, at least, I'm going to see enough.
We could play at least eight along Main Road. So you're saying three, so maybe like three, one, two, three?
One, two, five, and then at the top corner is eight.
All right.
Yeah.
Up here?
Yep.
All right. Stop that. Get it to fight.
Thank you. So my God, my God, is he putting that across the road?
Here?
Yes, fly up in the intersection, so they can have that driveway.
I mean, we're willing to do what we can as long as it's permitted, so we could
Yeah, if that doesn't make sense, then don't pull one there.
Yeah, that's the only
Yeah, sure. We could agree as a condition of approval to work with your professionals, provide additional landscaping along Main Road where it's feasible and won't, it won't conflict with any site triangles or anything of that nature. Even if it's lower shrubbery or something, just add greenery.
And as the traffic engineer, we have the DOT plans for the intersection, so we'll check their site triangles and make sure that the trees we add are outside it.
Let's see. This is more of a general question, is for, I guess, close to
Okay.
The Newfield LLC.
Yes.
This is the same LLC that owned the other Dollar Generals.
So each Dollar General is a different, single purpose entity. This umbrella developer, it's Capital Gross, owns Newfield Harding Highway DG, who's before you tonight, and they also did the one on Harding Highway and Porchtown Road. This developer did not do the other Dollar General that's on, I believe it's Delcy Drive. And that was a repurpose of a former building. They did not do that one. We did do the Porchtown Road, which was approved in 2019? I think, yeah, right before COVID. I remember because I was here eight months pregnant.
So this is for CME. And the lighting that's going to be used, is this the same lighting that's being used at Mallard, the voting with all the programs?
I would have to look at the, look at the plans, but I know, I know that those lights have, from my understanding, were addressed. I know that the township contact, we'd be building order, then they went out and addressed them. And I think this, how did last year, some
I would love to invite to the Porchtown property that that might be a similar light.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure something you say is all that's going to happen.
They are.
Other one, I don't think that's a Dollar General, I think that's, I'm thinking of the one that is off the, actually, it's not the one at Porchtown, the one at Porchtown was separate, separate one that I'm thinking of. There was another one, there was light issues over, I think, near the Newfield Bank.
Yeah, Delcy Drive.
That's, that wasn't this developer, so we can't speak to that. This will
Saying is it the same site, same type of lighting that could have the same issue?
Um, this would be the same type of lighting as the Porchtown Road facility. I can't speak to if it's the same as what a different developer did on Delcy Drive. What I can offer, and if my recollection serves me correctly, at the time of the previous application that was approved for this developer, we had offered as a condition of approval to give you a list of contacts for both the developer as well as the DG team directly. So if you have any type of maintenance issue, you're not going to the store manager, who then has to run it up a chain. Instead, you could come directly to the people getting this approved to hopefully get it resolved faster.
Not aware of any issues with the lighting of that site or separation of the site, but the lighting is not going.
In terms of lighting, I did have a question. When our report, we had recommended using shields on the lights, so I know at least the one on Delcy, just go, I think here, every time I drive by there, the lights are really bright. Right now, the lighting details provided, it just says the shields are available upon request, but I want to make sure that
Yes, we will add shields. We're happy to put that as a condition of approval. And I do believe, I do believe there's shields on the Porchtown Road site, but we're happy to do that, it's not a problem.
Yeah, just a matter of updating that detail.
Sure. I can say. If there's any other questions, we're happy to address them.
Nobody has any questions. I'm like, oh, you take the
I have, I have some comments, Chris, if you want to shoot through real quick. Do you have any questions on on your
I think they've addressed all the white questions from
So lighter, more technical. So with these first ones, I want, I want testimony to buy for is the maintenance access for the base. So I understand there's two five, five foot depressions that are, that are provided. One, I will point out, is for where you're putting your rip raft, so I don't think that can actually be used as an access point. And then the other one, if you're actually need to get a vehicle back there, five foot's not wide enough. So is, are you guys able to
Yeah, we can
Create a depression somewhere else where you're able to actually fit maintenance vehicles back there?
Yeah, we can explore other options. We could also increase the width to, let's say, 10 feet.
Next one, the, this is more of a, the pipe crossing that goes across the driveway.
Because we
Please look at the material you're utilizing. It's unclear if you guys have been uncovered. They saw them in factory's recommendation. I know you, you had original concrete, the HDP, but just make sure you have enough storage of room additionally. And this goes back to landscaping. The landscaping is shown over top of some of the utilities. It looks like to me that it's something to be, need to be relocated, because the bolt that goes in or the plant might interact with the drainage improvements. Just as
Yeah, generally, the landscaping needs about two feet of separation, so we'll look to provide that.
They'll have to probably relocate.
See, I couldn't
And the franks
The, the utilities, the
What I
Yeah, my other comment was going to be about the landscaping, but you guys addressed that.
And that's the one question. There is additional
Nothing is proposed, so Newfield Harding Highway DG LLC is under contract for the subdivided portion. So if they get all of their approvals, including this board and all outside agencies, once those approvals are in final, unappealable form, they would then close on this parcel and the current owner would retain the balance of the property. So what plans they have for that, I don't know.
So anybody want to do anything on that remainder parcel? I'd have to come before this board, the zoning
Pires
Chris, have they provided any testimony regarding that portion of the applications? Yeah.
For the subdivision? Ah, yes, Olivia has touched on it. There's no bulk variance or needed with regard to the subdivision that's proposed, all aspects. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the testimony, that all aspects of the bulk regulations are complied with?
No, it's correct.
What happened in our comments, there is a letter, will be addressed?
Yes.
The only question I have, like, for Ed, since the neighbor to the west is a cute barn, buffers, ag buffers could kick in, correct?
On that property, but not on the Dollar General lawn.
Okay.
That's the
Thus, this is two
What are you
Three
One Two Three One Two Three
I believe
I just want to mark it on yours.
Just make sure we're all on the same page. I believe it was two down here. And then one up the
And as long as this one on the bottom doesn't work here, it's
Yeah, which, yeah, which they'll relocate
And then
Our Our kisses
So you want all the
Yeah, that's fine.
So space and
Yeah. It was
So essentially, providing your streets, basically, street trees along the
Offense
More
Especially in three minute I think If there's any other questions
Chris, I'm
I have no further question to comment. Between the three versions of plans they've submitted in our review letters and the testimony tonight and the comments you all had, Jim actually is proud of the one I had about to addition, so they, but they've addressed all my comments and questions.
Any rebuttal on the request from
No, I take no, no issues, those.
I'd like to make a motion, but it's a little bit too refined for you.
Seconds, give us All in favor? We're now moving for public comments. Any comments on this application and only this application, please come forward. Please state your name and your address.
Thank you. My name is Cindy Merks, 330 O'Gavin Amalagon. I have a question because of, my concern is there's only one driveway on Route 40. Is that correct? I was having trouble hearing with the sound.
And it's proposing one access
One access, thank you. I guess my question is for one of our board members. Mr. Suede, you were here when, I believe, they did the Porchtown. And I know that you're the assistant fire chief.
Correct.
The concern is, is that the center turn lane and that being in a very busy intersection, you're, you know, and this intersection is just as busy as that is. I know you know, probably because we shared a lot of times that these accident scenes. Do you have concern with it only being one? Because the last time you, if I'm not mistaken, you were very instrumental in getting two driveways so that they would have, you know, some safety there, a buffer zone. And I, and I was just, you know, curious as to, do you think that it's just as dangerous an intersection with the center turn lane? And then, of course, you know, we have the buses coming in for Main Road School as well as the traffic coming into RLS. So my concern is, is I know there's supposed to be a center lane now with the new highway plans, at least it looks that way. But without it, that would back up the people doing 50 miles an hour or more going to the shore, the same thing that you experienced at Porchtown. And the nice thing is, is withholding them to those two driveways, it did make some good improvements to that area, I think, but we have had accidents where people have tried to make the driveway in there. I know I saw you at one. And so I just wanted to bring that up while you're looking at these plans, because, you know, maybe that's something you might want to entertain with, with this project. Thank you.
Barbara Halpern, Harding Highway. If you're swearing me in, I will tell the truth. Question one, where is the well? I didn't see it.
Well, it was in the front of the property on the Harding Highway side.
Okay, what is the situation with the remediation of the former gas station? If we're going to put a well right over there?
My understanding there, I'll let the attorney talk, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're required in order to develop anything here to comply with all standards to clean up the site. So the site will be cleaned before anything is is put on it.
Okay, because I didn't see like an environmental site assessment.
The jurisdiction would be by the the DEP. And we submitted one, didn't we?
They submitted a phase one.
Yeah.
My understanding is there was a subdivision separate where the old gas station is too.
Yes.
So I don't think that's part of the
Yeah, that, that was the portion up at this corner.
They did submit a phase
Yeah, I just wonder about the wisdom of setting the well there, but there really isn't any other place, because you have to be far enough from the basins and
They still have to go to the health department for
Yeah, right.
Phase one didn't recommend it. Go to phase two.
Well, that's good. And I assume there was a LSRP involved in that gas station cleanup? And you've reviewed those documents?
It's not part of this application.
Okay. Well, it may have some relevance, but let's move on. I believe Jim said they were going to put some landscape behind the basin in the back there.
We've agreed to put additional street trees back
Good, and then possibly along that little leg there?
Here as well, provided it doesn't conflict with any site triangles.
Yeah, that's one of the comments I would have made. Thank you, Jim. The other thing that I had a question about is what Cindy was talking about. I live on 40, and it is difficult to make a left on 40. And then you've got people coming around, you know, now where it's going to be a turn lane coming off the Main Road. You've got people trying to come out and make a left, and you've got trucks from RLS and just regular cars. Be a whole lot safer if you had an exit where people could go to the light to make their lefts. You know, not everyone's going to be coming where they're going to be able to make a right out of this establishment. And like Cindy is concerned, I am concerned as well that this is just many accidents way I live on 40 and it is difficult to make a left on 40. And then you've got people coming around, you know, now where it's going to be a turn lane coming off the main road. You've got people trying to come out and make a left and you've got trucks from RLS and just regular cars. Be a whole lot safer if you had an exit where people could go to the light to make their lefts. You know, not everyone's going to be coming where they're going to be able to make a right out of this establishment. And like Cindy is concerned, I'm concerned as well that this is just many accidents waiting to happen because it's too fast a road and it's too busy and it would be safer. The only access was on main road would actually be probably safer than the one on 40. But I think there needs to be two, as someone else Cindy pointed out, and other people have the same concerns. So.
I will say once, uh, one thing Cindy, the Dollar General on 40 in Porch Town. I have noticed that a lot of cars do cut through the parking lot, which now I think I'd like to have one driveway because now I see to be morbid hazard people coming out and somebody getting hit and I, I really worry about that. I really can't speak for this intersection here. I do know the grove goes out there a lot, but not as much as we go out to 40 or 40. And I still go out to 40 or 40.
Well, there are a lot of accidents at that intersection as well, though it may be a problem for the store at times when there's an accident. But I don't think I had any other questions about this. And, uh, I just think the site is really small for everything that's going on it. And I had a question about the, um, the farm buffer. My understanding is that the farm buffer, like in a neighborhood, when you're building a subdivision next to a farm, that buffer is on the subdivision property, not the farm property. So wouldn't it apply here as well if it's cute farm next door? Where is the couple hundred feet or whatever it is, a farm buffer?
I, I think given that the farmers, the property is the remainder of this lot, I don't know that a buffer is required to it's, it's a subdivision.
The answer is yes. The example is Knopf's nickname, Warren, Warren Knopf, the year 2003, 2004. Subdivided his own property to create three new lots. He had to supply 200 foot buffer with his own property, even though the neighboring farm was his own. As we just went to the state planner, Steve Brutus over this because the, uh, the owner actually tried to preserve his property and he wanted to rescind the buffers that were placed on his property by this finding board. Mr. Barelli, our prior solicitor spoke. He said, uh, you cannot rescind those buffers on either board. It has to go to superior court or another court. And were you in on that? It was very early this year it's happened. Mr. Knopf wanted to be paid the farmland preservation values for his buffer areas and he was not. And indeed this property is subject to the buffer restrictions. Not the neighboring farm, even though it's the same current owner. So my question for you two engineers is, are we needing those buffers as I asked earlier? I believe it's, it's ambiguous. Some state it's 100. I'm going to ask Olivia, the planner for her's input on this, if she's familiar with the right to farm ordinance, because there's 50 foot buffers, 100 foot buffers and 200 foot buffers depending on the situation.
Quick question. Our comment, pretty sure, right? You know, would you be able to remove the, the other parcel from the?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Would they remove the other parcels?
I, I can't say what the owner's going to do with the remainder of the property. We can have our planners.
Pretty sure the required buffer is under the, uh, right to farm section of the township code. If you're online looking it up right now, I don't wear the exact number, but it's a 100 foot buffer between any non-farm or non. Farm activity from, from the farm. So when we 100 that they are not meeting us, that would be.
So that's the building line I am to assume, and I'll ask any of the engineers.
I believe the park you wouldn't be allowed to approach in the, in the buffer either.
That I don't know. In this particular case, it appears the parking is within 20 feet of.
But did you go? We're looking at something real fast. It was our understanding and we're looking to clarify now that the buffer was intended to protect the commercial development and was as we originally stated yet. Yes, the few, if you want to call.
In the code, you wouldn't think just about 30.
I'm looking, I just, uh, pulled up the. I might need another minute to find that. I'm currently concerned that my quick Google search took me to a different Franklin Township, so I'm sorry. I just need another minute. I don't want to say, yeah, I, I thought I put that in there, but it, uh.
Franklin Township, yes, Eddie Code.
E code, yeah. Let's see, let me make sure this is the right town.
Yeah.
Oh, it did bring me the right town. Okay, that's good. I just didn't see section 151 popping up right.
I see right to farm on 253.
Yeah, maybe.
It's 253 is the land development code and I think it's chapter 151 within, or section 151 within 253, but it's.
It looks like 101.
It's under right to farm at the third, like bullet way down.
Uh, agriculture buffers, uh, uh.
And or adjacent.
And or adjacent to a R A P R R or P A zone. Let's see.
Which we are not.
Yeah, I don't.
We are the HC zones that would apply to us.
Let's see. Sorry, I hate doing this on the fly, but. I, I don't believe.
Yeah.
That it addresses the, uh.
Those buffers speak to when you're next to a residential zone.
Yeah.
Or residential use.
Solicitor at this point.
I'm sorry, I'm actually looking it up and I didn't bring my, uh, copy of the code with me, which I normally.
We can show you, we have it up on the.
Thanks, Chris.
I will say. Thank you.
The, uh, the, the intent of agriculture buffers is typically to protect the adjacent use from the impacts of the farm.
And vice versa.
Yeah, but typically it's in, it's intended to ensure smells and sound and agriculture activities are not impacting oftentimes, you know, in reference to that ordinance, oftentimes the residential neighbors that might be moving in next door. I think a lot of our communities have seen, uh, folks love the becalic nature of these agricultural communities until they learn what it's, you know, it can be challenging living next to a farm.
So when you have in the right to farm ordinance on 253 dash 101 righteous farm, it does address the R A P R R P A P zone, but it doesn't address the zone that we're in here, which is highway commercial. And that's with specific reference to agricultural buffers.
Quite certainly entirety of parcels and I like, double checks, that's the.
Less than two and a half years ago, this town passed a new ordinance allowing the right farm and access and agriculture by being an accepted use within all zones. Prior to that ordinance, farming was not an accepted use within the highway commercial zone. Today agriculture is an approved use within the highway commercial zone. And when this 253 101 was written, I don't believe it addressed our new ordinance. We now have an overlay where agriculture is an approved use within all zones. The idea is to protect the farmer as well as to protect the new applicant. If you go by the letter of the law as written today, where it states not within the highway commercial zone, I caution you in that now the highway commercial zone is approved for agriculture and the right to farm organs.
We understand that, but the fence, I mean, we would argue legally that you may have updated by way of overlay zoning, but the rest of the ordinance wasn't updated. This, this still reads that the buffers only apply when it's impacting these residential zones.
Yeah, the both C and D for agricultural buffer is sure. C addresses minor subdivisions as states specifically all applications for safe plan of subdivision approval located in or immediately above an R A P R R or P A P zone adjacent to lands that are assessed currently or within any of the three calendar years preceding the application as qualified farmland. Shall include, and then it goes into the size of the buffer. And same thing, D agricultural buffers that are adjacent to an R A P R R P A P zone. I'm just going to stick, I, I don't think it applies to, the buffer doesn't apply to the highway commercial zone, but certainly.
Moving forward, you may want to consider.
What is the buffer?
It's a, it's 50, 100 or 200, depending on the circumstances. So it's, what's, what's the circumstances that triggers each? Minor subdivisions like lunch, I'll show buffers to put 50 feet in width in a side yard, 100 feet in a rear yard. Major subdivisions, I'll show, but a vegetated buffer strip of 200 feet in width on all lots, which are along any boundary with land has been assessed or currently or in three previous calendar years preceding the application as qualified farmland less. And then there's a few exceptions.
I mean, at the end of the day, whatever the triggering characteristics are for what the width of the buffer is going to be, our argument clearly remains that we are not in the zone specified within the ordinance. So whether it's 50, 100 or 200, it, it doesn't apply to us.
Shall we accept that as viable or under caution?
I think, I, I mean, I, given the fact that.
You've kind of already answered that.
I answered with the, with the actual, so right now our ordinance was not included, but I don't know if there's an overlay or, um, zoning.
I don't know if I would call it an overlay zone. It's just an ordinance that says agriculture is permitted townshipwide as a grid at new.
In all sounds. When this 253 101 was written, it was not. However, today there is an overlay.
We, but as, again, I'm with Mr. Docney. I don't, I don't believe that constitutes an overlay.
Highway commercial needs a buffer.
Yeah.
I mean, so I think, I mean, the ordinance hasn't been updated, but I feel that any, any, um, change in, in, in what was declared, that, that would certainly, I think, control.
I mean, from, from the sounds of it, all the ordinance was, was saying that agriculture is permitted in all zones. That are you now, that would be like to argue that any zone where agriculture was already permitted and say you had a 50 foot front yard setback, is it now 50 foot front yard setback in every single zone because agriculture is now permitted in all of them?
Well, I think you have, you have agriculture, um, this is agriculture, this is not like a commercial. I think, you know, it would be really, in this, in this circumstance, it would be realistic to have some kind of buffer in this circumstance that would apply to this.
I, I don't disagree, but I think the fact of the matter is, um, while the intent would be to have a buffer, the letter of the law did not apply the buffer to this zone.
I, I think you can take it under advisement, uh, you know, as far as, uh, you know.
People may not like what I have to say, but I would like State Agriculture Development Committee to weigh in prior to a decision by this board. And I don't know if the applicant would be a first postponing until next month, and so this can be ironed out. Unless you say tonight that you'll give us a 50 foot buffer, buffer from the western property line to the parking lot.
I, I don't believe that's being.
Yep. I mean, the furry sized property doesn't allow for us to do that, so, uh, give me one second.
Well, considering that they grow corn there.
You're talking about the subdivision, basically they extend.
Right, extend the subdivision, which can be done today.
I mean, they're going to grow corn and possibly GMO corn. They're going to be spraying herbicides and pesticides. They're going to fall on people's cars that are going to affect people who go there. I think we do need to protect the general public from the kind of activity. It's not. I know, I'm just saying, I, I agree with you. Thank you.
Chris, what's the setback? Is it from like a?
Yeah, sure. Oh, like you don't know Ralph, come on. Chris Sayers, 184 Malga Lake Boulevard. First, I'd just like to congratulate, congratulate Jake for June, um, well earned victory. Again, my only concern again was also the fact that, you know, we have 13 acres to play with. I don't know why we're trying to squeeze everything on this small footprint, um, that requires these variances. Also, uh, secondly, I used to be a teacher, um, and I didn't teach at this school, but I, I know from firsthand experience, a lot of times teachers for lunch breaks like to walk to nearby stores. They don't necessarily drive away, but if there's a nearby store and the fact that they don't have a sidewalk along main road, I think it makes it less safe because if teachers do want to run down to the store to get something, I think it's, it's, it's safer for them to have a sidewalk most of the way so they can actually access the store. So that was the only other thing I wanted to say. Thank you.
I would like to hear, is anybody else in the public before I try me? I mean, I don't really feel this, I would ask as far as this, it's far like doing so much this applicant. Wait, based on the, you know, the ordinance designed, um, plans and what the, before the board. The, the ordinance hasn't changed, so I feel so, you know, we don't like to, uh, you know, but I, I want to hear the rest of this before I make it.
My name is Albert Piscisi. I live at 1299 Main Road. So you have a 13 acre property that you're using a couple acres of, and the remaining parcel that we are not sure what's going to become of that. And it seems to me that we're trying to jam a lot of stuff into a small space. There must be a reason that the applicant doesn't want to use some additional space. If they'd use the additional space, that would solve the loading issue, the parking issue. But my main concern is, um, I see trucks trying to enter that store and causing problems, whether it would be an accident or traffic jam. And I'm looking at the 30 foot width of the driveway entrance and it's not a really big width for a tractor trailer to pull in. The parking lot, especially if it's in use, even low use part of the day is going to be crowded with cars. It's, um, it looks like a, a hard sell for a truck driver unless Dollar General has really, really good truck drivers to make those turns, pull in, back it up and unload. I'm also concerned about the lighting and light pollution in general. I've been at the property on and off for the last 70 years and there's a lot of light pollution there now. And, um, I would hope that the installation of any lights would be confined the light to the property and not to the neighboring properties and perhaps even, you know, um, lights on timers that might go off at a certain point of the day or night. Couple thoughts.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on the public?
Hi, my name's Carly Magyar, 202 Eli Avenue. I just, I didn't know if this was already previously discussed. Will the deliveries compete with the, um, school hours?
They'll be during our off peak hours, which are usually like mid, late morning. So our, our peak hours are when people are going in the morning or after work. So children will be in school, but it would not be during like drop off or pickup or let out or anything like that.
Right, and I know, um, someone mentioned another store being like an outlier. I mean, this being across the street from an elementary school will, you know, pose unique situations as well. More activity of parents, I know, picking my kid up, there's a store, don't have time to go home. So there, I feel like the big school like that, um, you know, could cause more than, than.
To clarify, the comment was regarding to the other site being an outlier with, with respect to the site's actual configuration. It's a narrow rectangular lot, um, which is why the two access points, uh, it didn't have to do with the community surrounding it.
Yeah, yeah, it dealt with that specific situation. All right, so as a, you know, for the traffic going in and out of the parking lot, this could pose a unique situation.
So Sarah, I propose the question to you as well, whether you wanted to increase your box size, whether you wanted to come back to, whether you wanted to.
Anthony Fabrizio, 1294 Main Road. I'm concerned that, um, the access from the Dollar General onto Route 40 there, we got the bus garage, industrial regional bus garage, a lot of buses and there's a lot of traffic because I live right off of 40 and the traffic is horrendous. And this traffic coming out of. Dollar General onto Route 40 is not going to be very nice. It's going to be congestion. You've got the bus garage, you've got the buses, you've got tractors, trailers, you know, tankers and excess traffic. And the speed limit is 50, but you have to be sitting on side of the road to do 50 because the people pass here. You know, it's a traffic is going to be horrendous there. And this traffic coming out of Dollar General onto Route 40 is really not acceptable. It should really be coming out on main road, the excess, you know, the main exit onto Route 40. I'm going to protest it as long as I can because I don't like to see the traffic coming out on Route 40. We've got enough problems right here. We've got enough problems right here now, on Route forty.
Okay, Mr. Dockney.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other comments from the public before we close out?
Dorothy Fabrizio, twelve ninety-four Main Road. My concern also is with the traffic. I'd like to know where the Dollar General driveway is, and what's exactly across the street from it currently? Because I can't...
You can't point that out for her?
The driveway, it's a great...
It was across the street from, and it's right on the train.
That's ridiculous, Dusty Regional Bus Garage.
The Dusty Road, directly, yeah. Okay, now, we do not know, as the general public, this new construction, where the merge, how far that's gonna come in, and how close is that to your drive, to your proposed new driveway?
Are you speaking as to the DOT improvements?
Yes.
Mr. Marchkinski says we do have the plans, and I believe the work's already begun.
Yes, it's currently under construction, I do have the plans, I'll put it up over here if you want.
We can mark this as A four, Paul, could you read the title underneath?
Yes, it's an NJ DOT roadway improvement exhibit prepared by our office and to deal with.
Yep.
Yeah, the tunneling's been here, and turning, we got this turn lanes, and we just tried to stop part of the road that's in here to the turn lane.
To clarify, this was submitted with our plans.
That's another matter, because the cars coming out of here, and the cars coming down, we can't either way. And when they come out of Main Grade, Main Grade School, they just
Yeah, I'm...
Pulling out of here.
I just want to make sure there's sufficient room, because we have a lot of buses that turn there, and now they're gonna have to be merging to oncoming traffic. I mean, the traffic's gonna be coming out behind them, and then they're gonna have to merge in, plus you're gonna have to watch the driveway. Cars are gonna be turning this way, it's a lot of, a lot of congestion right there, I just want to know, I just want to clear how like, how...
So I want to ask, ask this question for Paul, the traffic engineer.
Yeah, certainly.
Has Dollar General considered a curb cut for the entrance on Main Road versus Route forty, or in addition to?
Yes, and in the overall reasoning for not, we didn't want to increase traffic on Main Road, consider that a rural road. We can, we didn't want to push traffic towards the school, we wanted to keep the traffic at a controlled intersection, the DOT is currently improving. We've designed our driveway in direct conjunction and direct correspondence with the DOT to make sure our separation and all of our sight lines comply with that dedicated turn lane they're putting in, and we felt that that was the safest and most efficient way.
How do you apply to the DOT if I'm on Jersey for your...
Yes, and we are, we are close to having our permit, we have addressed all geometrical and spacing comments to date.
DOT found no adverse additions?
They did not.
And if I just may, from a legal perspective, piggybacking off of what's already being discussed, but overtly saying it, this driveway is under the jurisdiction of DOT, we're on a state highway, no different than Main Road is under the jurisdiction of the county. So regardless of where we choose to put the drive, the, the comments with regards to if it's adequate aren't for this board. Further, obviously, this board is gonna take things into consideration, this is a permitted use, so what off-site impacts that this operation may have, governing law states cannot be taken into consideration. So as, you know, we can go through how this might impact the intersection, how it might impact the school in terms of traffic, but the fact of the matter is, governing law says that's not an appropriate consideration for this board. We've done our diligence, we're applying to the appropriate authorities for the curb cut, and as Paul has stated, we're close to having that permit, so I would just ask that the board consider that in considering the comments that are being brought forth by the public.
We're still on open public portion at this time, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, is there a motion to close a pre-hubway portion? Is there a second, second one, can you tell it's set, wait, stop this way? All those in favor?
So I know there's a couple of questions you're waiting for answers from me on, mainly with regard to this agricultural buffer and what we want to do with the application this evening. The fact of the matter is, you know, we don't want to push forward if the board is that adamant that they don't feel comfortable moving forward with our interpretation that the, the buffer doesn't apply to us. That said, I'd be remiss not to make the argument one more time that it does not apply to us. We have an entire team of professionals, engineers, planners, the like, that have gone through these plans in painstaking detail in preparing them in order to get them before not just this board, but before the county, before the DOT. We have come through all of the ordinances, we've come through all the state regulations, and we are very familiar with them. Not only has our team done this, but your own professionals, your engineer and your planner, have now issued three separate review letters, and not once was this agricultural buffer brought up. And I think the reason for that is very clear, it does not apply. Under the municipal land use laws, I'm sure this board is aware, there's what is called the time of the application rule. At the time our application is submitted and deemed complete, whatever ordinances are in effect at the time the application is complete are the ordinances that the application is to be considered under. So I, I seriously, I do understand your position, the agricultural use was added to each of the zones by way of an ordinance amendment. The fact of the matter is, your ordinance was not amended to apply this agricultural buffer to the highway commercial zone. As it stands today, as it standard at the time our application was deemed complete, it applies to agricultural uses in residential and purely agricultural zones. So we would urge the board to consider that. Again, we, if you really want us to push this to go before your agricultural committee to get their interpretation, I'm not gonna fight you on it, I, I don't want to see this go sideways when we've worked so hard to get to where we are now. As I've stated, and not to belabor the point, we have worked with your professionals every step of the way so far. You know, we didn't submit an application and just appear before you, this application has been pending for months, and we're really trying to work with you to get an application that's going to work for this township. You also have to consider, this is now the second application that this specific developer has done within Franklin, and I think it goes to show that we are willing to work with you, we're team players, we want to contribute to the community, so I'm not trying to be stubborn, I'm just trying to protect my clients' interest. So again, I, I would really urge you to reconsider whether or not you find that that agricultural buffer applies, because from a legal standpoint, we very much do not think that it does. So I, I don't know if you want to deliberate, and then I can make a decision, or if you just want to push me, and we'll say we'll have to push it.
I just want to ask one question, first of all, thank you for your legal, getting all the agricultural buffers. Again, we have a solicitor.
Sure. And, and I, I... I respect her opinion, she's been very helpful throughout, protecting our own clients' interests, so I get it.
Thank you, Sarah.
With respect to that, I think the points that you're making, I ask Kate, Kate, your interpretation. I mean, I understand how important it is to a victim, but I'm making, doing amendment, you better amend all your documents.
Right.
The fact that our ordinance hasn't been amended, what is your interpretation? Is it, is it what, I'm sorry, Sarah? Is it what Sarah, as Sarah represents, or do you have a different interpretation?
So I, Sarah, I, so this is difficult, because I'm here, the, the actual ordinance is not amended to reflect that change. However, you know, the professionals have gone through the ordinances and worked with the professionals in conjunction to getting their application ready for this evening, without, I guess, I guess the benefit of having that ordinance change reflected, or I guess, brought up to them.
If I could, though, I just want to confirm, it, it's not that an ordinance change wasn't brought to our attention, it's that an ordinance change was never made with respect to the buffers. The only change that was made is that agriculture is now permitted in all zones.
So the agriculture, right, it was something that was a change that should have fit, or should have fitted our ordinance, that was not reflecting our ordinance.
Well, right. I, I think that...
Sounds like, you have to kind of go with what stopped it.
I think the, the board has the ability to ask their professionals to determine. I don't, so I think that the board has the ability to ask the professionals to determine whether or not they feel satisfied with the application as, as indicated with the Right to Farm Act, however...
If I, if I just, not to cut you off, but I just want to, again, these are two separate issues. Your ordinance was amended to change the uses, your ordinance was not amended to change the buffer. Changing a use does not automatically change your bulk regulation, so even though agricultural, again, I'm not trying to be repetitive, but even though you added agricultural throughout the municipality, that does not automatically change all the buffers in every single zone, it, that's just not how it works.
One other thing if I can add here, there's also two separate jurisdictions that are involved in farm land preservation. Certainly zoning, which is what this board has the authority over, the buffer clearly states in your current ordinance that it applies only to those three particular zones. Now, if they don't provide a buffer between this, the remaining farm and the Dollar General, I don't know what that does to any farm land assessment or any other SABC or County Ag or Township Ag preservation requirements. You're certainly a much greater expert on that than, than I am. But in terms of what this board has the authority and jurisdiction over in terms of zoning, the zoning says that those buffers apply specifically to those three agricultural and residential districts.
So, Mr. Dockney, just to clarify, you're in agreement that it's not applied to the HC zone?
As the ordinance is written in terms of under the Right to Farm Act, the buffer requirements seem to apply only to those three specific districts and not to the commercial districts.
I'll, I'll agree with that statement that you stated, but I'm gonna ask a question on the sideline. Currently, this township is revealing its master plan, and Chris is our client of the master plan, and I'm gonna ask a simple question. Should this buffer question be addressed in the master plan?
I was going to suggest after this application that perhaps it's something we do discuss, if that is...
Because should this board this evening approve this application as applying to work, I'd hate to see someone else come through towards and use this as a precedence as buffers.
So my question directly for Alex Stidapie.
In this same exact application, right, what, what we're hanging our hat on is that because at the time of this application, the ordinances were the way you're describing them, that we all agree they were. When this same application came to mark, now that it's changed, would be running...
It's not, it's not changed yet.
You've got a document to change, and then it can...
The difference is, we could come to you with this exact same application with this layout, but be in one of those residential zones, and this wouldn't fly, because we would need that hundred, fifty, two-hundred-foot buffer, whatever it is, but right now, it, it doesn't. But if you were to approve this application and then change your ordinance so it applies to all zones, just the HC zone, whatever the township wants to do, and then the owner of the remainder parcel decides to create a deal with another developer, and another piece is subdivided off, at that point, they would have to comply with the buffer.
There is no precedent, because you've clearly shown that you've made change, and they applied here for the...
That, that would be my next comment, not...
Not stop for this, or next week?
No, and... And, but if I can also, even if you don't make the change, under the municipal land use law, the whole point of having a board, even if we had a fully compliant application tonight, we would still need to come for you, come before you site plan approval, even if there's no variances, even if there's no waivers, because it's the role of this board to review every application individually based on a specific fact. So I would argue that even if you didn't change your ordinance, you're not setting a precedent, because we have facts that can support not needing the buffer for this application that another application in the same zone might not be able to make.
Colonel's. Okay, does your team wish to close now?
I'll provide a brief closing, it's hot in here, I don't want to take up too much more of your time. I just want to thank the board for their time this evening. Again, just as a quick sum up, we're seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval and the minor site plan, or minor subdivision approval. Again, no development is proposed on the remainder lot at this time. The Dollar General will be, have the access drive along Harding Highway. We almost have the DOT permit, all rounds of comments have gone back to the DOT, so we're waiting on that final permit. We do have applications in with all the other outside agencies for whom we need approval. We did recently get a review letter from the county, all of the comments, which we will provide you a copy or minor, we can comply with them, they're all very routine. With respect to the relief that we're seeking tonight, you've heard extensive testimony from all three of our professionals, and I think it's very clear, and I'm not gonna, you know, belabor the point, but I think it's clear that all the relief can be supported. As was already stated, we meet all the bulk requirements for the site. The building meets the lot, or I'm sorry, the property meets the lot size, the lot width, all front yard, rear yard, side yard setbacks, building height, all of the signage complies with your code, we're not seeking any sign relief. The two variances for the parking space, the first being for the parking space, we provide ample justifications. I'm not sure if you caught it, but as Mr. Much testified, your, the site on Porch Town and Harding Highway, the maximum that's been seen there is sixteen cars, so thirty-five cars here is more than adequate. The loading space, you've heard extensive testimony as to why it can be justified, and it won't conflict with the parking operations. And as for the three design waivers, the landscaping, we're making up for elsewhere on the site, including around the perimeter, based on Mr. Kelly's comments. The sidewalks, we do have sidewalks along the Dollar General frontage on Harding Highway. We do not have the sidewalks on Main Road, and I know there were some public comments stating that it would be nice, because the school is on Main Road. The fact of the matter is, we don't want to put sidewalks on Main Road when there's no sidewalks on the other side, because then you're encouraging children to run across Main Road to get to a sidewalk at dead ends. As was stated in testimony, we prefer they walk down to the intersection and use the crosswalks that are being installed as part of the NJ DOT improvements. Finally, the architectural design waiver, as you heard, we feel we meet the intent of the ordinance by providing a building that provides different materials and some breakup of the facade, so it's not a plain flat wall. So with all that in mind, we would ask that this board respectfully grant this application tonight, with all the conditions we discussed on record, including adding landscaping, shielding the lighting, and working with your professionals to address all of their comments in their July tenth, twenty twenty-four review letter. So that is it, thank you again for your time.
If any of it, that there is anything developed, funds, made or that property along Main Road...
They would have to come back here and, like, sidewalks...
Question is, side, and they, they could sidewalks in?
They would, yes, I would presumably, unless you granted a waiver.
If that, if the sidewalks had to be put in in the adjacent piece of property, that you would then come back and put sidewalks in to, for some, probably where...
That, we would come back at a later, I mean, I'm not, I don't, I've never seen a, a condition where that would be something that can be imposed. Paul, have you ever, I, I mean, I'm sure if there's the space on the property, you could talk to...
Think about it, right, so here's the one option, that one park is the north border, if they built sidewalks along with that northern border, the only piece that wouldn't be sidewalks would be your property.
We understand that, I, I think the legal implication with that is, is, you know, if our client ever sells the property, how are you gonna bind a, a future owner to a condition of this approval? If that's truly a concern, if, if that's something that's gonna hold us up, can we agree to put sidewalks on Main Road? I, I know it's not...
It's counter, is a lot of the...
Yeah, we would have to, again, it's a county frontage, so we'd have to see if they even allow it. We could agree as a condition of approval to work with your professionals on potentially, but again, it's gonna depend on what the county will allow.
But you don't want to have that cherish ourselves.
Provision of future sidewalks built in your plans, if neighboring sidewalks are developed.
Again, I, I have a concern with that condition, because you're, you're binding a future owner.
I agree with that comment, so I think if, I think, you know, if the applicant...
You can to a deemed restriction.
A deemed restriction could...
You could, I, I still don't think you could, though, because that then increases your impervious coverage, so would it trigger variance relief based on what your coverage requirements are at that time? I, I feel like it would trigger site plan to come back and, and put those sidewalks in. So what I would propose as the condition of approval is, again, we're willing to work with your professionals to look into the feasibility of it. If it's feasible, we can do it for the Dollar General frontage, as, as long as we're the understanding we're not gonna do it for the entire property line. But again, it would hinge on whether or not it's something feasible with the county, since it is their frontage. I, I don't know if the county wants sidewalks there, so we don't want to agree to do it, and then the county tells us no, and we have to come back here.
Somebody would have gotten, would have gotten approval from the county, because they ran sidewalks along with your northern border, county obviously...
I would imagine if the county's gonna give someone approval for that, they're gonna start somewhere, and we're the one with an application in now. So if they're contemplating giving someone approval for sidewalks in the future, why not give us approval for them now? So if they... Well, no, we, that's what we're saying, we'll agree as a condition of approval, we will speak to the county to see if they'd be amenable to us putting sidewalk there. If they say, no, we don't want sidewalks on Main Road, then I think that answers the question of whether someone north of us is gonna put sidewalks in in the future.
For applicants to contact DOT and amend their application to include...
The county, not, yeah.
County issue, amend the application to include sidewalks along the Dollar General frontage.
If that's what the, the majority of the board wants, like, provided the full board... wants that to be a condition, we're happy to.
Comments from the board, anybody side?
I don't like the side.
You don't like.
It's just my opinion.
Very good.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, just my.
I respectfully, you know, we have the DOT plan up. The DOT obviously only has jurisdiction over their portion, but they're only showing, and if you can see it on exhibit here, they're only showing the sidewalk on their portion going to here.
So nothing is nothing. I, I can't see the county seeing an application for this future property, seeing that the DOT got in, seeing that we have no sidewalk and then telling this person to put sidewalk in. There's no crosswalk proposed to the majority side, everything's coming.
Chris. Chris said, I'm going to park into the local green road around this place. That, that would be something that the.
That was county jurisdiction.
County jurisdiction, but I think that's, that should be something that should be discussed.
That, yeah, that's fine.
Touch on the sidewalk issue. I wouldn't recommend putting sidewalk on this side. If any side you're going to put sidewalk on, you put it on the main roadside, which is also in the violence, but it's also part of this application.
Yeah, we have, we have no problem doing that as long as the county gives us the okay, we can put the no parking signs.
Any last comments from the board members?
No.
With that being said, is a motion from the board to, on this PV 23-17.
Hold on one, one second. You want that on just Main Road or also on the DOT portion?
I don't see why it would hurt me aside. Because they'll pass the front of the dollar, they'll pull up down the next boundary.
So you need to reset the DOT.
That's fine.
So is there a motion?
And we can. And the two variances and Caprice was all went for. I'm, I said didn't comply with the, and I play with only, they should sit there to be read. Volcan face.
Mr. Relating?
Yes.
Mr. Cowell?
Yes.
Mr. Swade?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Verona?
Yes.
Mr. Travelium?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. We very much appreciate it. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Okay, consists of moving on with our meeting tonight. Chris, do you have any reports or communications?
I was not previously prepared to make a report, but I, I think.
That's okay.
Other persons.
But at this.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's do our secretary.
Yeah.
Now, okay. All right. So how about a report on the master plan?
Okay, well, we have a draft completed that I actually sent to Chrissy yesterday, but in light of the conversation we just had, perhaps we, whether it's at the next planning board meeting or some committee wants to discuss it, and you guys want to discuss the potential for an buffer and where specifically they apply, that getting into the master plan would be the time to address that rather than adopting a master plan next month and then have to go back and do it again.
See how everyone heard it here to see. It's like, no, I suggest that we put on the docket for the August meeting to present or to the tram. That you're able with the members of the master plan.
Still, Chris, I, I have a general question. Since the, I don't, the premise of this is to make sure that the ordinance is in line and all, all over the place. Is that something that any other contradictory they missed, or which the ordinance should be addressed?
Well, I've got to take a look at everything in the ordinance, not the Right to Farm Act to see if I can figure out what the intent was at the time that that was adopted versus what the language of the code.
Yeah, I think we already mentioned that in the master plan that was adopted, but
I, I don't think I've read in its entirety the order to vote free. So I got to look at that and see, it could be, there's a reason that the other parts of the code weren't updated. I don't look. So it is something worth discussing, though I don't necessarily want to say I'm going to go and make a change in the master. Yeah, but it is something worth discussing. It doesn't, I'm the planning board, so.
Yeah, I think we can still do that and then based on the results of that discussion
you do with the master plan, it's a. We can request a few more changes and come back and.
Anything else? We have a. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 18th? And there's probably some extensions for those if they're here. Please raise your hand if you're abstaining.
And you can raise if you can.
Yeah.
So we can use this stuff.
We have a question. I want to be the county.
Are we just going to do it all in?
Yeah, all in favor? All in favor. Question for our solicitor, Katrina, do we need any closed sessions?
You're closed tonight.
Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
No.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have questions.